All right, are we ready up here?
Yeah.
All right. Six thirty, let's call the meeting order to the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in itself.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Schwer.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Nordby.
Here.
Mayor Mungy.
Here.
Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please? So moved, Councilmember Schwer.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Cole, all those in favor say aye.
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 All right.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Next up, consent agenda. Item A, October first, 2024 workshop minutes. Item B, October first, 2024 city council meeting minutes. Item C, general claims of $1,561,839.3. Item D, HRA claims of $32,436.24. Item E, resolution approving the 2025 score grant application. Item F, resolution accepting donations for September of 2024. Item G, application for a temporary on sale liquor license for exempt permit for the North St., or North Star Museum of Scouting Memorabilia, Inc., Saturday, November ninth, 2024. Item H, application for a charitable gambling permit to conduct excluded bingo by the Knights of Columbus Council, 4967, on November twenty-third, 2024. Item I, approved conditional use permit application for 2586 Seventh Avenue East. Item J, approve purchase of Class 202S electric meters. Item K, Ramsey County roadway classification change, resolution of support. Item L, building permits for September 2024. Item M, approved labor contracts and MOUs between the City of North St. Paul and Teamsters Public and Law Enforcement Employees Union, Local 320, which is the Public Works in Electric, and Law Enforcement Labor Services, Local 211, which is patrol, and Local 298, which is sergeants.
Thank you very much. Any council member want to pull anything?
I would like to pull item I.
All right. Anybody else? Not? Throw I down there. Make that, what? D?
Uh, yep.
All right. Can I get a motion to pass the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Schwer.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Norby, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have our three minutes open to the public. We'll start with Dean Madison. I said Matheson, excuse me. Come on up. Address, please. Welcome. Hi.
I'm Dean Matheson, I live at 2096 McKnight Road, southeast corner of Seventh Avenue, McKnight Road. We got a problem with the big trucks coming down McKnight Road from the project up there on Lurford or McKnight. They're skidding down the road, they're running their brake brakes, and so on and so forth, and then there's been a problem with people running the red lights at Seventh and McKnight. There's been loud vehicles, not only motorcycles, but all kinds of loud vehicles, at all hours of the night. I've contacted the police department three separate times, nothing's been done that I can notice. But I just think somebody should be able to patrol that a little better because somebody's going to get hurt or get killed.
Okay. City manager will take note of that?
Yes, we will.
All right, appreciate your.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. John Schmal.
John Schmal, 2750 Chisholm Avenue. I'll take a pos-, or a statement that I agree with that. I came from somewhere on McKnight. Man, those big trucks that are on there, holy cow. You've all seen this, it's been provided to you in various emails. This was just one item that I pulled off. It's not just myself that works on this, there's a member of our group that loves doing data requests and then shows it to us. But this one got me, I just couldn't believe it. This is a request for a credit card purchase. And the form says, right on the top, $2,000. No more than $2,000. And you can see what the request was for 269325. Now, I've attended a lot of meetings here that have dealt with the problem with the credit cards. That the Office of State Auditor issued a letter in May of nineteen, or 2023, that you didn't get to until sometime in July to take it up, or was it August? God knows what the length of time it was that the, you took interest in seeing what it was all about. But this one is just gross. A $2,000 limitation on the form, and it says that there is going to be a purchase of $2,600. And it's for the LMC Annual Conference, for Zoom. What are we doing with Liga Minnesota City? You know, this was part of your analysis of what's going on. Now, Councilmember Nordby asked, do we have any responsibilities of this? And the city attorney said, nope, just go ahead and do whatever, sign off. Who cares? Does anyone care? Thank you.
All right. Next.
Anybody else? Nope. All right, next up is a special hearing. Special assessment hearing for unpaid bills and authorizing the City of North St. Paul certified the county auditor's office of all unpaid fees. Did you want to talk to that at all, Dan? Finance Director Winnick.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. This is the annual process to certify onto the property tax system for any unpaid bills. They include the water, sewer, garbage. Does not include our electric. If you can remember, we had a, there was an item for holding of the public hearing. By statute, we have to send out letters, which we've done to all of the residents that are identified underneath this. They have time to contact us to make, you know, payment for it. Even after this public hearing, they have 30 days to pay if there's even part of the statute that if they were to dispute it, that there's avenues for them to do that, too. But at the end of 30 days, whatever hasn't been paid, we will certify, and it'll be on the property taxes that are paid in 2025. There's three resolutions that are here. One for North St. Paul properties, one for Maplewood properties, and then there's one for, it contains one North St. Paul property that's actually billed by the City of Oakdale for water. And so they have given that to us because we're in Ramsey County, we can certify to Ramsey County, they're in Washington County. So that's why we end up having that one. Right now, the totals of all of those items is a little over $26,000 without any interest or fees. And again, if they pay it in the next 30 days, there will be no interest in fees. After that point in time, then there's interest that'll be applied to that 6% for the solid waste and 10% for all of the other fees. So need to have the city council take action to pass these resolutions, and again, they have 30 days to pay at the end of that point, then we will certify that amount to Ramsey County and be put onto their property taxes. I think in the last packet when we had the public hearing that put together, this was asked a few years ago, so we did it last year, we did it this year, kind of giving some sort of historical information. I think actually Councilmember Wong had asked for this to kind of look at what kind of the dollar amounts that have been certified or been put out there in public hearing in the past. There was an uptick in 2023. Prior to that, it was, you know, about 16,000, 22,000, and 21, a little over 15 and 22. Last year, it ticked up to 31,000. This year, we were at 29,900 to start the process. We're at 26,000 now. And then we do anticipate that it goes, and it has, it goes down before the 30 days are up and that we actually certify it. There actually are some property owners that like it just to go onto their property tax bill, and then they end up paying it. But, yeah, so again, need to have the three resolutions. And again, we'll certify the exact amount that's owed after the 30 days expire. Any questions with that? No?
Nope. Any questions?
Do we have to do each one individually?
You have to open it up to the public, correct? So, yeah.
Yeah, you have to open it up to the public.
Yep.
If there's any public comments on.
Six forty-two is, open up to the public, any comments about this? If not, we will close the public part of it at six forty-two, six forty-three, give a minute. Thank you. All right. Now we need to do the votes on it.
Yes, on the, there's three resolutions.
Would you read the first one?
I'll just read the front top to it.
Yep.
So it is, it is a resolution approving assessment to properties for unpaid water, wastewater, environmental utility, streetlights, solid waste, and recycling for North St. Paul properties.
All right. Can I get a motion on this, please?
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Wong, second.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Norby, all those in favor say aye.
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 The second resolution is a resolution approving assessments to properties for unpaid water, wastewater, environmental utility, and recycling for Maplewood properties.
So moved.
Thank, so moved by Councilmember Cole, second.
Second.
Councilmember Wong, all those in favor say aye.
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 And the third is a resolution approving assessment to properties for unpaid water, wastewater, environmental utility, streetlights, solid waste, and recycling for North St. Paul properties billed by the City of Oakdale.
Can I have a motion, please? So moved, Councilmember Schwer.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Norby, switched up a little bit, that's good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. That's right, trying to screw me up with the names once again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did I? I didn't. Forgot the sh in your name, so why are we sh now? All right, next.
All right, move on to the city business action items and recommendations. First item up is discuss community center feasibility study consultant. So we posted for a feasibility study. We ended up getting six proposals back from contractors. So we formed a committee internal to the city of five people, and we created a list to base that on what their scores were for the criteria. So we based it on consulting firm and key project staff experience, proven track record in completing similar projects, project approach to complement, or to completing the project, consultants familiarity with recreation facility programming and architecture, proposed project schedule, and proposed consultant cost. So we did score these with that group. The review of the committee came up with several key staff to review the proposals. Staff committee met to discuss the findings and share the overall score results. The review committee discussed the following items, one scoring, the proposed community outreach engagement strategies, overall programming and operational costs. Does the consultant have the ability to carry out the defined scope of the services? What expertise does the consultant have in similar industry areas, public versus private? Has the proposed consulting team worked together in previous projects in similar industry? And after discussion and scoring, city staff reviewed the committee recommendations in the, to the city council as being EAPC architects. So city staff is looking for direction from council to proceed with creating a feasibility study agreement slash contract with them, with the selected consultant. The final agreement will come back to the city council for formal approval at a future meeting date.
Can you speak to some of the different features or type of work that you appreciated about this firm compared to the others? Why did it stand out?
They were pretty close between that firm and one other firm, but overall, you know, it was their layout, their experience with other, actually recreational programs and community centers. They had a pretty in-depth approach to the projects and keeping staff up to date as they're working their way through that process. Just good round experience for something like this specifically, so.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
And just for my own understanding of, sorry, a vote today means that you contact this company, you negotiate all the details of the contract with them, and then that contract is brought back before us. Is that an accurate statement?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
And when do you suspect that contract to be ready?
So we're going to get together back with the committee that we put together and reach out to see if they have any other specific questions that maybe to set up an interview with them and bring in a representative from that company, and then talk details and make sure that they're covering areas that the city finds important as well.
For me, I'm a little concerned of $90,000 we're looking at here.
Just under, correct.
Just under $90,000, which is what a one and a quarter percent would be considered our levy on that type of thing, so. And what was the range? So we can hear it from the range of these different ones, the six?
Anywhere from 28 to 172 was the range of the six different proposals.
It's quite the range.
Very much so.
And just my concern is that the price of $90,000 seems to be quite steep.
So looking for a recommendation for approval of working on pulling that contract together to bring back to you?
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Schwer. All those in favor say aye.
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 Against? Nay.
All right. Next item up is item B, 2024 crack seal project, approved change order number one. City engineer Morgan Dolly here to discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As has been done before, this is, the next two items on your agenda go together. So if it so pleases, council, I'll run through both of them, and you can have two separate considerations for action on each of them. This is pertaining to the 2024 crack sealing project, so just regular street maintenance that we do every two to three years on different roadways. The first item under consideration is a change order to increase the contract amount to include some additional work that Public Works wanted to include in the project and identified separate funding for, in terms of unspent, street maintenance dollars. Pretty much, the contractor did all of the streets as a part of the project, and we were right on the button in terms of the quantities and the amount, and so they finished all the street work. Actually, went a little bit over, but they agreed to toe the line to the contract amount. But Public Works wanted to have a look at the Public Works parking lot, so that area of the yard there could have been included but was not originally intended as a recipient for crack sealing. However, doing it now would be able to potentially secure the pricing in this particular contract as opposed to waiting for future years. So looking for the ability for the contractor to complete that work with the bid prices, and we negotiated no additional mobilization charges. It was a favorable opportunity to get that additional work done at the same time, right? And so change order number one is in the amount of $4,121.84 to cover that additional square footage area within the Public Works parking lot yard. That ceiling of the cracks is something that will be good for another three years. I don't remember the last time it was done, but will help lengthen the lifespan of that parking lot before any sort of like significant major maintenance is needed on the parking lot pavement. So again, that's your first consideration is approving change order number one, and then following that is just approval of pay voucher number five, and I think it's five and final, so it's just one and done. Or I'm sorry, number one and final, so it's just one payment and a final to cover again. All of the street work that was done is originally conceived, plus the addition of that additional parking lot work. So with that, I will stand for any questions the council might have prior to considering both of those items. And the second item of the two is a resolution in keeping with kind of standard practice, we do approve final payments by resolution.
Sounds good. Any questions, anyone? If not, can I get a motion for the first one to approve the change order for number one? So moved, Councilmember Schwer.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Norby, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Number two, approve the final voucher and final payment. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Norby.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Cole, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate your time.
All right, and item D, brought down from consent and consent agenda for approved conditional use permit application for 2586 Seventh Avenue East.
I am the one that polled this, so I'd like to start out with, I polled it, but I strongly recommend everyone approve it. I did not poll this because I am not in favor of it. I think it is my intention to vote yes and make the motion to approve this. The reason I polled this is because this highlighted, in my two years here, some of the more complaints I've gotten as a city council member, that the businesses along Main Street can somewhat cause grumblings from the residents near them. Now, they also bought a house right next to commercial property. So in cases like this, you have building owners and residents doing everything by the book, doing everything right, and coming after a permit, but it still is creating a little bit of friction, we'll say, with the local residents, and there's nothing more that the building owners, residents of those buildings can do. Because of the thought process, I just wanted to pull it and bring it to your attention, and my thought is maybe in the future, we could have a workshop to discuss residential parking near the downtown area to see if there was something we could do to alleviate some of the friction when we have building owners and residents doing everything by the book and everything that we ask of them, and more so, just talk about it. Like I say, as a council member over the two years, this is probably one of the top complaints I've gotten for the people that are by, or whole downtown, the amount of commercial proper, parking that is happening in front of their residents. So like I say, I'm going to make a motion to approve this. Just wanted to bring it to your attention and thought that this might be a good catalyst for a future workshop to talk about the residential parking buyer downtown.
Thank you. I know we did a parking study, two years ago, whenever I started, and we counted up like, was it 700 and some spots in public parking. So I think people are just used to, just not wanting to walk and move, so if we can, you know, that's the type of thing. I think if we get out there more, we have a lot across the street from that, Sandburgs. We have the lot behind it, we got the big lot behind K&amp;J. So I think we do have plenty of parking. It's just we have to make sure people know, and we can have respect towards the residents. I think that would help. All right, can I get a motion for this? Councilmember Schwer, second, Councilmember Norby, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
All right. Next up is reports of city manager and departments. Start off with our electric director, just welcomed their second new baby, so he's off next couple of weeks with the new Avery. So beautiful little child that he has there, got some pictures, which is great. Also, we had two of our linemen that responded to the mutual aid request down in Kissimmee, Florida. They did go down there and help. There was, so there were 14 utilities with 28 people from Minnesota that went down there, but it went from 22 different states. They had over 700 public utilities that responded, and they had 40 to 50,000 line personnel down there that went down to help. So Kissimmee's kind of in the middle of the state. The storm did kind of wobble a bit right before they made landfall, and it went south further, so they didn't get hit as hard as they thought they were going to get. They worked for a day there and then requested help for the Orlando area. And within two days, they got back what they needed to do, and they hit the road and came back. So then they just got back this afternoon, so I think they're taking a day to rest. They've been pretty busy.
Well deserved.
Yeah, they did a great job. Seen one of their pictures of a nice alligator in the middle of a pond where they were working by, so. Avery's been busy with website update, just starting that process now. About every couple of years that they do that. So expect more to come when people come to our website. We also have a candidate forum coming up on October 24th at 6:00 PM at the Legion, if anybody's interested in seeing the new candidates out there. Community Development, they are working on fee schedule update and also working on a new residential guide for people coming to the city, maybe having a packet together for things to expect, phone numbers to have. So we used to have that once upon a time, that was a while ago, but putting that together. Finance is working hard with all the budget stuff, of course. Working with the department heads, getting together SIP numbers and now pulling together all the facility assessment numbers. Electric has been busy with their underground. They have kind of much finished up the Hazel area over in Maplewood, Jennifer Lane area. That was a big project for them. They'll be jumping over to Delaware and 17th, getting the power whole set in place for the new duplexes that are going in over there. They also started digging in for lights up at Casey Lake. So we'll be adding that soon, hopefully have that lit up before the winter sets in.
You can't walk around the lake in your jammies anymore. Councilmember Cole.
We'll see you.
Hate it when that happens.
As part of SIP funding, Electric has picked up their bucket trucks and also a generator today that came in, so that's good for them. Public Works has been busy with hydrant flushing. They're about three quarters of the way done through the city. Pavement preservation with Sixth Street, Charles, and Eldridge is underway. They've got the first layer down, they're raising the irons, and they'll get to second layer probably next week. Four out of the six hydrants that they're replacing right now is done. And the EAC grant money is complete now. They have, they've ground out the stumps and planted the new trees for the city part of it. So they had, was it 90 Boulevard trees that were removed per that grant? That was really great. PD, their newest officer that they brought on board is now fully trained in and can be out on his own now. They have two more starting. These will be not laterals, but their new PD officers coming in, starting the 28th. So they'll be in the academy for the first two weeks and then starting to work out in the field. They've been busy also working with career days around. Hennepin Tech had one and they sent over four officers and had some good response to that. And people have been making phone calls and getting hold of them. Fire had two captain positions that they just filled for the pay down call. They got three new applicants for the fire personnel. And they just finished up fire prevention week last week by visiting all the schools. And then at the second council meeting in November, we'll have the poster contest. Yeah, that's always fun. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. We'll take a lot of pictures for you so you can see the. I know, aren't they? That's for sure. Yes. Councilmember Norby.
The last planning commission we had, we just voted on that, the conditional use permit for the property on 7th. And the next planning commission will be November 7.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Wong.
Last meeting, the group kind of was wrapping up some of their projects and I think they're trying to get one more utility box wrapped before the end of the year. And then they're, yeah, gonna meet, let's see. I think they're taking a little bit of like rest now somewhat. But I think the next meeting will be the first Wednesday of November, which is November 6th here at 6:30 in the chambers.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Swier.
I don't have anything for Parks and Rec. The meeting is next Wednesday here in council chambers.
Okay. Member Cole.
The October EDA meeting was canceled. So we look forward to everyone on November the 12th here in council chambers, 4 o'clock.
Nice, thank you very much. General business. Councilmember Norby.
The next city council meeting would be November 5th, but because that's voting day, it is not happening that day. And I just encourage everyone to go out and vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong. Like the way I stopped there, I just did it.
Well done.
Thank you.
Let's see, I attended the community input session at the Casey Lake Park with HGA on Thursday, I think it was one of two. But I was talking to some of the commissioners and they said that like turnout was really good, particularly on the first night. So it sounds like they're getting a lot of good feedback from the public. So it was good to see people out there and putting their stickers on there and voting, so. And I think other than that, I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Swier, anything?
I don't have anything.
Member Cole.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing tonight, all right.
What?
It's five weeks until we're back here.
I know, yes. For us, we had the booyah that was there. Unfortunately, I was at an event, so I called him up and asked him if he could grab me a couple to-go containers, and he said they were all sold out. So that, it was a mixed emotions. I was glad that they sold out, but I wasn't glad because I didn't get any. So that was, that's when I called Jason, our fire chief, Jason. I met, Brian and I met with the school board superintendent. So the superintendent and the mayors of, there was Maplewood, Oakdale, and myself there. So we talked about the school year. Starting off, so far, they said the school year started off pretty well. So everything is going along well. So she said they're able to meet expectations that they were doing. It's been smooth, so it's been very nice. So she appreciated that. We did get into the discussion about fields and we got in discussion about the community center as well. And I asked her about, you know, the community center. And they don't want to partner with us because I asked that question. Be able to use it every once in a while was something that she mentioned. But we talked about partnership and they don't have a need for that right now as far as how that goes. Maybe every once in a while type of thing would be all they would need. So we discussed that, plus the fields and everything else. So anything I missed as far as what we talked about?
Just a good chance to get together and everybody to talk about concerns and direction they're moving. So it was just a good meeting.
It's a real good meeting. They, all of us together, all the administrators, managers, plus the mayor. So it was a good, it was good, good to get together, be able to start off the school year. We're going to do that in the spring again. We're trying to get back to the twice a year. So it went well. If there's nothing else, I encourage what Councilmember Norby said, get everybody out to vote. And it's coming quick and if nothing else, call for adjournment.
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Cole, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I made it through a meeting. Woo-hoo.